Orange friend business.
Yeah, if I, you know, just the G T and then just, yeah, she can pull up and pull it easier. Cause that takes her.
Ah, ah, not no. No, I'm already confused now.
Yeah, I got, I got my email. That's, I'm trying to search up anything to do with Commissioner. Where I thought I could do on this, but not on mine.
What's the thing?
I don't want to say, we need your phone.
Every year they have some kind of major fundraiser, somebody golf tournament, some.
Is Adam not coming?
He doesn't play, he runs.
In that area.
Yeah, he's, he's high up with that group somehow. He has to be there to oversee it, to manage it, that sort of thing.
He should be the only one.
I don't know. Some high end place. So, I don't know. I wouldn't know one golf course or another. I wouldn't know which end of the stick to hold. But it looks like he'd hold pistol grip would make it make more sense.
Okay, at six o'clock, I'm gonna call the Loudoun County Commission meeting for June 5th, 2023. First up is Jim Jenkins.
Out of a way, is a resolution to adopt the 2018 International Building Code, 2018 International Residential Code, 2018 International Mechanical, 2018 International Plumbing, 2018 International Fuel Gas, 2018 International Existing Building Code, 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, and the ICC 8117.1-2017, that's a accessibility code for Loudoun County, Tennessee, pursuant to chapter, uh, section, Tennessee code annotated sections 5 dash 20 dash 101 through 5 dash 20 dash 106.
Any comments?
Too many dashes. I couldn't keep them.
B.
B is a resolution admitting the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee pursuant to chapter 7, 13 dash 7 dash 105, Tennessee code annotated to rezone from A2 rural residential district to C2 general commercial district. Loudoun County tax map 019 parcel 088.00 located at 9545 Hotchkiss Valley Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee situated in the 5th legislative district.
Comments or concerns? C.
Uh, C is a resolution admitting the zoning map Loudoun County, Tennessee pursuant to chapter 7, 13 dash 7 dash 105, Tennessee code annotated to rezone from M1 general industrial district to A1 agricultural forestry district, located, or Loudoun County tax map, uh, 032 parcel 112.00 located at Corporate Park Drive, Loudoun County, Tennessee situated in the first legislative district.
I haven't had any calls, uh, concerns with that rezon on Corporate Drive. They're just taking it from commercial and I think they're gonna put a couple modular homes, so. No, no negative feedback on it.
Any other comments? We'll vote on it in just a few minutes and won't reread them. There are two people that signed up to talk regarding these public hearings on the zoning changes. Edmund Ledford.
I happen to live here on the Hotchkiss Valley West. And I traveled Hotchkiss Valley East going to the North City. Been traveling Hotchkiss Valley East, and there happened to be a tractor and trailer on it. Of course, I'd actually pulled over to the side of the road, cause he was on my side of the road. And I've got a picture of that on my phone. I was able to get it out fast enough to take. Anyway, uh, the road's not wide enough for commercial traffic. I complained about it quite a bit. I wanted to hold up my hands. So I was wanting to got the Linnor City side posted note, tractors and trailers are 18 weeks through the system. Heavenly posting. If you wanna see it, I've got it on my phone. I've also got another picture of a car hauler on the road. Uh, it's basically straddling the, what we will call the yellow line. Uh, but anyway, that's about it for the, yeah, I'm just, I'm just opposed to having commercial traffic on that roadway.
Is that something the sheriff should look into or Billy?
Well, this is the rezon we got tonight, what he's referring to.
Oh, okay. Lori Melroy.
Good evening. I have the same concerns as he brought up, is that the, the road is not wide enough for commercial traffic. And the best example I can give is the fact that there was a truck accident on that road this morning. A truck rolled over into the ditch and it's just, it, there's not that much traffic on it, but the trucks are just too big. We cannot handle it as is. Thank you.
All right. I've asked Commissioner Shaver to open the meeting with a pledge and a prayer.
Say the pledge, Bree.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. You told us in the Bible, Lord, that our days are short here and full of trouble, but we still wanna say thank you for letting us have another one. It's a good day. We get up, we're healthy, we're standing. We're missing one of our own tonight. Uh, I wanna ask you to be with Erin Rice's family, that she's lost her father. And I'm sure her and her entire family are having to come to terms with that and deal with variant apparent. That's tough. I don't care who you are, so give that family some comfort and some ease to handle that transition for them. Remember all the crazy things going in the world. It doesn't really matter, cause you're in control. We know you are, but it's, it's hard to, hard, some hard stuff to deal with sometimes. Watch over us and guide us. Give us a little bit of smarts here tonight, that we did the right kind of thing. Stand up for what's right, do what's right, be the kind of people you'd want us to be, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Tammy, call the roll.
Randolph.
Here.
Jeans.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Quillen.
Here.
Satterfield.
Here.
Whitfield.
Here.
Cullen.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Shaver.
Here.
Waller.
All right, next up is the adoption of the June 5th, 2023 county commission agenda.
Chairman, I'm making a motion with it. Adopt the agenda hasn't been provided to us.
Second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Randolph to adopt the commission agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the reading and acceptance of the May 1st, 2023 Loudoun Commission, Loudoun County Commission minutes. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as they're written.
Okay.
As they were provided to us previously.
We got a second by Commissioner Whitfield. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Next up is public comments. Blake Moore.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you to the commissioners, chairman, mayor, who is unfortunately not here with us tonight, and guests tonight for the opportunity to speak again regarding what I have termed as an information desert in Loudoun County. This evening, I would like to specifically address a recurring theme I have heard related to a hesitancy to adopt change and a desire among many in our community to repeat things the way they are. The main point here is that change in and of itself is not bad, and we can reasonably argue that change is what got us to the point where we are today in our history. We can reasonably assume that the Cherokee Indians were not fond of being forced from their land in the late 1700s. However, the Cherokees protected this land from the French invaders and this ultimately enabled the British to inhabit and eventually claim it for the British monarchy. Our community, which was vying for the Earl of Loudoun, John Campbell, a British military leader, in a very different view in his mind if the American colonists had not revolted against the British. Had Christiana County not been formed by taking portions of Rome, Monroe, and Blount Counties in May of 1870, we would not be living in Loudoun County today. Had Senator Howard Baker not pushed for an exemption to the Endangered Species Act in 1979 for that beautiful little three-inch fish called the snail darter, Tellico Lake might not have been established and Cooper Properties would not have purchased the land in 1985 that we now know as Tellico Village. Were it not for companies such as Kimberly-Clark, Mountain Boats, Delconum, USA, et cetera, the tax base and employment landscape would look much different today. I say all this to reinforce the fact that change is going to happen. Some will be good, some may initially be painful, but ultimately with the right plan in place, we can effectively manage the growth and implement a communication plan that will give residents a voice if they choose to exercise it for the good of the community, not personal agendas. Each commissioner has received a copy of a presentation I put together several months ago, which includes plans being implemented by surrounding counties to manage future growth, what our future is going to include from a growth and a demographic perspective and how we need to prepare. Please understand that I'm not trying to tell any elected official how to do their job, but we honestly need better communications through an actively managed website, a community information ambassador, and review of the various committee members qualifications. Make no mistake, our county is a business, and just like any corporation, we need the best qualified representatives of our county that are engaged exclusively for the betterment of the county. Our path has been forged through tough decisions and changes that unfortunately affected many people, but ultimately the changes resulted in us being where we are today. Our future rests on the ability of our elected and appointed officials and leaders to make decisions that prepare us for growth. No one has all the answers, but we can learn from those who are already forging paths forward. I implore you to work with me and others in the community who want to irrigate our information desert and support the best growth planning, committee leadership, and communication sharing. Again, thanks for the opportunity to address you this evening, and I look forward to supporting this county as we grow.
Thank you. Okay. Jim, you're back up, number A.
How about it, Bill?
Oh, yeah, make motion that we do not read again.
We did that.
We all agree with you. I'll make a motion to approve Jim's request to do whatever you want to do with the building code.
We got a motion from Commissioner Shaver. Do we have a second?
Second.
Chase got it.
Chase.
He's the only one with his suit on, so let him have it.
It's gotta be back at 10:30.
We're gonna be done by then.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion on that? We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Shaver and seconded by Commissioner Randolph. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? B.
Make a motion to deny.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, B is a motion to deny.
That's the rezon in Hotchkiss Valley.
Yep. And it's seconded by Commissioner Morrison.
Nope, I'm saying.
Who was it?
Morrison.
All right, backwards. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? That resolution is denied. C.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Jeans has made a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Randolph. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Jim, keep me up to date on my tour of little things when you get it. Something to tell them. Thank you, man.
Okay, Mayor Bradshaw is not here tonight, so I'll do his section, which consists of appointments, resignation, and library board nominations. First up is an appointment for the Solid Waste Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion with point Mr. Bush to that seat. God bless his heart.
Yep.
I don't know what he'll do when he gets there, but I'll make the motion for it.
I'll second that, and I'll second bless your heart.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Shaver to appoint Gary Bush to the Solid Waste Commission, seconded by Commissioner Randolph. Any further discussion?
One comment? Please make sure the name's spelled right.
Do we wreck it?
Yeah, B U S C H.
Hey, well, maybe we spelled it right, and you've had it wrong all this time. You're here now, we spell it that way here.
B U S C H.
We know who you are.
Like the beard.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Gary, welcome to the NFL. Next up is the resignation of Bill Satterfield from the.
Does that need action?
I think he wants it accepted, that's all.
I'll make a motion to accept Mr. Satterfield's cowardly resignation from the Solid Waste Commission.
You know, that was saying, you gotta know when to fold them.
Absolutely.
Do we have a second? Okay, we got a second by Commissioner Whitfield. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Are you opposed?
No, I'm, I'm still on the accepting part.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve all the mayor's recommendations for the library board.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver to approve the recommendations by the mayor for the library board, both sides.
Second.
Seconded by Chase. We got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Randolph. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up is Gary Whitfield.
Uh, this is a, um, a Fort Creek Road Resolution Interlocal Agreement with the city of Philadelphia. Um, I think we've done our due diligence on there. It protects the, the county for a paving job. Uh, County Attorney Bob Bowman has looked over it, uh, and, um, agreed and wrote the resolution. So, uh, the mayor of Philadelphia has already signed it, so, uh, we just.
Is that in form of a motion?
That's in form of a motion.
I'll second Commissioner Whitfield's motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we got it. Commissioner Whitfield made the motion to approve the Fort Creek Road Resolution and interlocal agreement, seconded by Commissioner Shaver. All right, since this involves money, call the roll.
She is?
Yes.
Just Gary's money.
Yes.
Quillen.
Hi, I'm Satterfield.
Hi.
Whitfield.
Yes, I.
Cullen.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yes.
Randolph.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the, uh, employee medical vision dental insurance changes as was presented at the workshop.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Shaver to improve the metal, medical vision and dental insurance, seconded by Commissioner Quillen. Any further discussion? If I remember right, it's what, a 5% increase?
It is for just medical.
Dental and dental vision are named.
Okay, Chris is here, I saw him. Good job.
I was gonna say to, to Mr. Walper, thank you for all your hard work on our, on our health insurance for our employees.
That's unheard of, 5%. Anyway, since there's money involved, call the roll, Tammy.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Quillen.
I'm Satterfield.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yes.
Randolph.
Yes.
Jeans.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Done, Chris. Okay, Erin Rice, Van told you the reason she's not here tonight. Please keep her in your thoughts and prayers. So I'm gonna do my best to get through the resolutions and the counts and budgets.
But Gary, I'll make a motion on it first, and we'll have it took care of.
Uh, first one's consideration for Fort Tidge Rock Funds, 44 Creek Road, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield to approve 120 from the American Rescue Funds, seconded by Commissioner Shaver. Money involved, call the roll.
Quillen. Hi, Satterfield.
Hi.
Whitfield.
Hi.
Cullen.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yes.
Randolph.
Yes.
Jeans.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next up is a recommendation from the 7th District, myself. I'm gonna use my ARPA funds in two ways. $100,000 contribution to Our Place Adult Daycare Center and $25,000 for Timeless Telico. Jim DeRusi and crew are here. They're adding on to it. And the way it's gonna be apportioned out, when they start building, they get a third. Halfway through, you get a third. At the end, you get the rest of it. So I'll make a mo, by camp.
I'll make a motion on behalf of Commissioner Chairman for his ARPA expenditures.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Whitfield. Any further discussion? That's money involved, call the roll.
Satterfield.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yes.
Randolph.
Yes.
Jeans.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Quillen. Yes.
Okay, motion carries. And when Sarah and my wife drop us off, make sure you keep us in the shade. I get sunburned real bad. Anyway. C, consideration of recommendation to approve distribution of ARPA funds to the following nonprofit organizations serving Loudoun County, Tennessee. This is because it had to be read twice. $20,000 to the Loudoun County Sheriff's Benevolation Fund, 10,000 from Commissioner Whitfield, 10,000 from myself. Can I get a motion?
Chairman, I'll make, Gary.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Whitfield, seconded by Commissioner Shaver. Oh, Jeans. Okay.
Give it to Bill.
Give it to Bill.
Seconded by Commissioner Jeans, the fire chief. Since there's money involved, Tammy, call the roll.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yes.
Randolph.
Yes.
Jeans.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Quillen. Yes. Satterfield.
Yes. There you go. Motion carries. Sorry, Bill.
This is fourth attempt.
Let him sit, let him do something.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion with, uh, uh, D.
Okay, that's to remove 500 from the resolution, which will return to District 3. Gary Whitfield made the, Commissioner Whitfield made the motion. Who's the second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Satterfield.
Yeah, this is, uh, a restructuring of the, of what we thought we were gonna do initially. And I said, the proportion of the $500,000 that we're holding on to is going to help bring back, put in a sewer system in the city, so that was our whole, that's the reason, and we appreciate that. Thank you for the motion, Gary.
Okay, any further discussion? Ken, there's money involved, call the roll.
Cullen.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yes.
Randolph.
Yes.
Jeans.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Quillen. Yes. Satterfield.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Okay, the next one.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to approve E, F, G, H, and I. These are all recurring grants with no matching funds that go with them. Discussed at the workshop. I'll put forward a motion to approve all four of them at once.
Second. Second, which one?
All of them. Me.
Which one did you say? Bill Jeans, I think. I think it's Bill Jeans. Nope, not me this time.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Satterfield to approve E, F, G, and H. Any further discussion? Call the roll, Tammy.
Morrison.
Yes.
Shaver.
Yes.
Randolph.
Yes.
Jeans.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Cullen. Yes. Satterfield.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes. Okay, that motion carries for one, two, three, four, five. Okay. Next up is amendments, line items.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion to approve 1 through 9, as was discussed at the Budget Committee and approved and was discussed at the workshop previously.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Shaver.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Whitfield. Any further discussion? Okay, Tammy, call the roll.
Nobody tells me we can't tonight.
Shaver.
Uh, yes.
Randolph.
Yes.
Jeans.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Quillen. Yes. Satterfield.
Yes.
Whitfield.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Be a good night to make a motion to cut the mayor's pay in half, Chase. What do you think? Give me a say?
What?
Make a motion to cut the mayor's pay in half. He's not here, we can do it.
We can do it, and distribute to county commission.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, next, uh, Erin, she's not here, but the statements were passed out, I believe, last two workshop on Thursday.
These weren't. This is what they give us every time.
Okay, all right. Okay, next up is bonds and notary.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve all bonds and notaries listed on our agenda.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Quillen. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, just one comment before we go, uh, in reference to one of our public speakers tonight. Mr. Pym Smith, we have received, how many responses to our web?
I believe it was 15 requests or proposals were received.
And we, uh, I thought I talked to the mayor. I think we're gonna maybe try to have an initial meeting here pretty soon, but, but we have, 15 people have submitted some information, their desire to, design and operate the webpage for the county, so we pumped a little water into the desk.
See, we are moving along this tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Randolph.
Whoa.
Make one again.
Jenkins. My things are messing with you, Henry.
They all sound alike down there.
Oh, yeah. Everybody at the table are saying.
We're gonna put that rope it off next meeting. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting is.
6:27. Where you going, classmate? You got anything done that I might sleep on? We build anything yet?